Well, it's time. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Let's go. Let's go. Did I get it? No, I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't see it. Oh, good. Thanks. Thank you. Okay. Here's the property to do. So, if we can just see another stick. Oh, there. It's a small one. Thanks. Okay. Is everyone ready?
Yep, we're ready.
Okay. Notice was given, legal notice was given of this regular meeting of the mayor and board of all the persons for Thursday, June 14th, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the courtroom at City Hall. We will, we're now having our call to, this is our call to order, and in sequence, we're going to stand and observe a moment of silence. We're going to have our invocation, and we're asking Councilman Shaw, Robert Shaw, to give us our invocation to lead us in prayer, and going to ask Mayor Protem, Councilman Marvin Moore to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Shall we all stand?
Our most gracious heaven and father, we just thank thee for this opportunity to serve tonight, Lord, and to meet and to work on business that is so important to our city. We just pray that you would be with each thing that we undertake to do, Lord, and may your will be accomplished. Thank thee for the wonderful blessings you've already given us all, so much for them. And we ask for a good meeting tonight, and we honor and glory to our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of its citizens, one nation, unregapped, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Goldman, can we get a roll call?
Yes, sir. Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Prater.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Green.
Present.
Mr. Locke.
You're all present, ma'am.
We do have a quorum. This meeting is in session. Do we have any announcements tonight? Do we have any announcements?
Mayor, I must make one comment.
Yes, sir.
I know it's a lot of folks that's over the city, around about the city. We do have the asphalt, hot asphalt machine working. Now, I know there's been rumors it's out, been sent off for repair, but as of today, it was working. I personally looked at it.
Yes. May I comment on that, Mr. Shaw?
Go ahead.
Let me set the record straight. When the asphalt machine made its trip from New Hampshire, that's several thousand miles, and you bribing and you getting vibration and all of that. The only problem that we had with the asphalt machine, on the back, there is a, there's an, there's an infrared burner bed that lets down and heats the asphalt. It has two squirrel cage blowers on it, and it's got propane going into those blowers, and it's mixed with the jets and all of that, where the air and fuel mixed. The plant either fitting shook loose in transit, or the plant didn't tighten it. And we were doing a demo over in the parking lot, and the, it caught, the blower caught fire, and that was it. It was just the blower. That's all that was destroyed, and the little, the little air tube that went down to it. And we had one flown in, and we put it on, and that's the only problem that there was. We parked the truck inside the shop because we don't want that to get wet, that asphalt, that, those burners. It's better if they don't get wet and get soaked because we're going to light them and we don't, for preservation. So, we parked the truck inside the maintenance building. So, that's why whoever went scoping out couldn't see it. So, the truck never left town. It never left our property. And a few calls by people speculate would cure some of these rumors, these Facebook rumors that are just simply not true and unfounded. Congressman Shaw. Councilman Shaw spent the day, I think, with the asphalt crew. Is that correct, basically?
Part of it.
Part of it. He did not take a shovel and hoe, though. And, no, but I'm just kidding with you, Robert. But, but we're excited. We can get permanent fixes, and we love the process. One of our friends from Monroe, Police Jerk Clamett, came up and was with us on Martin Luther King, and he said it's the best patches that he's ever seen. He said that on video. We have the video of him commenting on that, the best that he'd ever seen. So, we're excited. We wanted to be able to fix the other 93% to 94% of the streets that were not covered in our street program. And that's what we are, that's our goal, is to be able to do continual patches to streets that were not going to be resurfaced, repaved. Thank you. Any other announcements?
Small backhoe. I see Mr. Gray's in the audience. We'd approve a small backhoe. Can you give us an update on that, sir?
Mr. Gray, can you come to the mic?
Can you come to the mic, sir?
These are announcements, Mr. Prater.
Yeah, I know.
Do you want to expand the agenda?
And Ms. Diane said in that truck, you don't think she towed the truck up? When the infrared truck came in, Ms. Lenore said it.
She did not have anything to do with it.
Okay, all right. Okay. Well, this is June. Next year's a few weeks.
Okay. And Mr. Prater is talking about a small, yeah, backhoe that we can get in tight places and clean ditches during the summer so that we can get better drainage in the fall and things like that.
We all about beautification, Mr. Gray. You're going to have to get a move on. Next, next few weeks? I'm talking about my district. I would go to District B. That's what I'm looking out for, District B.
Any more announcements? Are there any other announcements?
Did I start something?
Okay. Public comments as they relate to items on the agenda. Is there someone from the public that would like to come and address this council on anything that's on the agenda? Approval of minutes of the irregular meeting held on May 10th, 2018. What is your desire on this, council?
May I make a motion that we approve those minutes?
Been moved by Councilman Locke and seconded by Councilman Shaw that we approve those minutes. Are there any, is there any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I didn't hear. All in favor? Okay. All opposed? The eyes have it. The minutes are approved. Finance Committee report, resolution 18-1771, bills and claims for the month of May 2018. Councilman Shaw.
Yes, Mayor. The council, and you have reviewed these bills and claims for the month of June, excuse me, month of May, and I just make a recommendation and offer a motion to approve these minutes.
The finance-
Excuse me, these bills and claims.
Yes, sir. The Finance Committee Chair has made, you made a motion?
Yes.
Okay, has made a motion. Do we have a second? All in, oh, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? The committee report resolution is adopted. May 2018 revenue expense report.
I make a motion that we accept as printed the revenue and expense reports for May of 2018.
We have a motion?
I second that motion.
Motion by Councilman Shaw, seconded by Mayor Protem, Councilman Moore, that we accept. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The revenue expense report is, is accepted. Delinked with occupational license. This is a report on. Is that correct, Ms. Goldman?
That's correct.
Okay, so we do have that. No actions required. Bo Byer is attorney for Civic Source adjudicated tax sale. Mr. Byer, welcome to Bastrop, Louisiana, sir.
Mayor Cotton and the Bastrop City Council, thank you all for having me here, allowing me to talk to you all and represent Civic Source. I've driven here from New Orleans to bring you all really great news after our most successful property tax sale that we've had here in the city of Bastrop in the last four years. We made your sales to kind of remind you all that we had 845 paid prior to the sale. Twenty-four went to sale. We sold 21 of them. Those are numbers and a percentage that New Orleans will like. So, it's been a really, that was a really successful sale. We have a new sale coming up next week. It will start on June 19th and go through June 21st, and we have 848, which is more than last year's properties that we've already pulled. And we still have another week for the slackers to pull and pay their taxes so we can remove them from the sale as well. But we're really excited. There's 34 properties left for the property tax sale, and we're really excited about that. But I know you guys are thinking, there is no way this guy drove all the way from New Orleans to advertise to us that we have a property tax sale coming up in a week. So, what, and I'm guilty as charged on that. What has happened is, is that, you know, when we received your May 10th letter rescinding our contract, and y'all voted to rescind the professional services agreement because of adjudicated properties, which is, is, you know, they're two separate products. They're not combined. The issue we had is that our contract, so that means that you actually, in doing that, also canceled our tax sale contract.
Tax sale, right.
So, what we are asking from you to do is, I respectfully ask that you rescind that decision and cancel, and rescind the decision to cancel the previous professional services agreement. I'm here to answer any questions you guys have about that.
May I make a statement, council? We were not aware, and I don't think you were aware, that that was one contract made that dealt with both, correct?
It was a one-off, and the reason it happened is usually there are two separate collectors.
Yep.
And you are unique in that way in that the city collects both the annual property taxes as well as sells the UK properties.
Yes. What I, what I would recommend to the council is that we rescind, because if we don't rescind, then you can't do the tax sale, which is normal, next week, is it?
Yes.
Yes. And that we rescind with the stipulation that we withdraw all of the adjudicated and give you a new list.
Absolutely. We would be very happy.
And you brought two contracts. Do you have a copy of that for each of the council? Oh, Ms. Goldman, you gave, you gave us each of these?
He only gave me one, but it's what I gave you.
She, she gave me the contract. I've got the copy for bill, new contract.
Okay, which we'll give to our council. Our council have, you have a copy, Mr. Pierre, sir?
I just saw it a couple of moments ago.
Okay. I would, I would like to see, I desire the council to, to rescind our action because those two were combined in the, in the spirit of efficiency. And you understand why we were trying to do the adjudicated. We've got a lot of properties that are not worth $5,000.
Absolutely.
The fees.
And that's something-
And it was preventing us from cleaning those lots and taking action and all of that, so it, and there were so many of them that fit that description until we wanted to go on and clean those, clean those properties up and do things. So, I think the rescension will, with the, with the withdrawal of the properties off of the adjudicated list, and then we'll give you a new set of properties that wouldn't hinder the goal of the, the city to fight our blight, to, to, to get, you know, these nuisances cleared.
That would also give us an opportunity to re-advertise it. What we've found is that when we have signs placed prior to post, right as we post the properties, we do it all together. We do signs, we post the properties, and we come here and teach a class, the interest will kick up, the redemptions will kick up, everything that makes this a good program for the city will actually see a spike.
Well, there are certain properties that, that you, you guys are perfect for, I think, and, and we want the public to have more options, if they want clear titles and title insurance and all of that. But if it's someone next door who just wants to park the truck over there and have a barbecue pit over there, that's an entirely different thing. So, any comments from the council? What's your pleasure, council? Are there any questions first? Mr. Locke, you were going to say?
I just, can we make a motion now-
Yes, sir.
-to rescind the adjudicated property-
With the stipulation?
With the stipulation that we'll keep the-
Well, no, no, it's one contract, so we'd have to-
Mayor, let's let old Mr. Pierre, let him address that.
Okay. Well, I don't think Mr. Pierre was in on the conversation. He just got, he just got here, but go ahead, Mr. Pierre. Mr. Pierre, it's my understanding that both the contracts, the tax sale contract and adjudicated process contract was one contract.
I didn't see that as such. I've only seen, I've only seen the one contract with the dealing with the adjudicated part.
What, what do you see?
We've seen that that is the contract that was signed by the city of Bastrop, and it directs us to do both of them, but if-
Oh, okay. Well, we have to rescind both of them.
Now, is there one or is there two? Because you're telling me that there's one, right now.
If there's a second one, then that would be great. That would fix all of this, but I haven't seen the second one. I've only seen the one contract that you all signed.
Even so, even if I was signing, it don't, we had to put in a contract that we'll get them a list of houses that we want them to-
Well, that's already stipulated, but we want to take the- No, no, it's, it's in the contract. It's a city, I believe, can select the properties.
Let me go pull it. Let me go pull the contract.
Yes. Well, can we go on to another item while Mr. Pierre's doing that, and we'll call you? Is that okay, council?
Fine. We need to get it straight.
Okay, great.
Not clear right now.
Okay. All right, let's move, we're going to delay action on, on that item number nine, and go to Ms. Pauline Kennard, Morehouse Mae Madness. Welcome to council meeting, Ms. Kennard.
I'm here to represent Morehouse Mae Madness, and first I want to thank the mayor and council for your support. Our 2018 Morehouse Mae Madness, everything looked really well, and I would thank the city workers, too, for their help. They made the city look so nice, and we appreciate all of that. And now I'm asking for approval for our Morehouse Mae Madness on May the 4th, 2019.
I think it's wonderful that you're doing this now, but the council has to make the-
I would say, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and schedule Mae Madness for May the 4th of 2019.
I second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Shaw and erased to second by Mayor Protem Moore and, and Councilman Locke. Any discussion? I'd like to say that, that Mae Madness is wonderful for Bastrop, and we're just so thrilled to, to support it, and it, it's a great event, and it's, you guys presented top quality. Everything is top quality.
I'm happy to be involved with it and helping promote our cities.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? May 4th, 2019 is the date. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Okay. Resolution, item 11, resolution 18-1778, a resolution for the mayor and board of all the persons for the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, to extend by five years the franchise rights of midlife EMS to operate as the provider of emergency medical transportation ambulance within the corporate limits of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, and to provide otherwise with respect there to Mr. Ted Parker. Hello, Ms. Parker. How you doing?
All right.
Great.
I've been waiting for y'all over five years for an extension, and actually, it's a year in advance these days.
Okay.
Because of the amount of expense that I have to put out, but I'd like to come to ask y'all for another five-year extension. We've got it for about 20 years now.
Okay. Mr. Pierre is not in, Mr. Parker, and I, I'm in favor of an extension. I do see a problem, though. The original contract, originally, I just got this two days ago. I didn't even, I didn't know it was on the agenda till two days ago. Now, I probably, I probably, I wanted to call you, but I didn't. I failed to do it, and I apologize. The original contract called for, and I was going to ask Mr. Pierre, and I did not have, because I just got the original today. On page two of the original contract say, "Contract stipulation, the contract shall commence at 12:01 AM, June 29, 2000. This agreement shall terminate at midnight, June 28, 2004, unless extended as provided for herein." Here's the provision, "The contract may be extended by mutual consent of the parties for two extension periods, two years each." So, that was only four years in the original contract, provided that the provider has met the requirements of the city and has earned the right to negotiate for renewal. The city reserved, but that's the only stipulation that this original contract and this new one is, is, is being known that on this day, you know, 2018 to date, could duly authorized representative midlife and the city of Bastrop appears herein for the purpose of executing this addendum to this.
There's one in between there that you might have gotten.
We, I don't. So, if, but is that an addendum? This, to me, is an addendum to the original. Every one of them should have been an addendum to the original, probably, and I think we may have a little technical legal problem there, because if, if this new contract is, is attached to the original contract, then even though I haven't contacted any lawyer and haven't talked with Mr. Pierre, then the original doesn't call for any addendums except for the first two, and those were two years each. So, so I would ask the council to, let's review, and probably, we may have to do a new contract like the original one, because I don't see any provision in the original one to, to allow us to go beyond the two. You want to see that, Robert? I don't know whether you, or you guys. Do you all have a copy of the original contract? Okay. Hold it, Ms. Lenore is going to get us a copy of it. Yes, sir. We just want to do it right, that's all.
And I've got it in the car.
Okay. You're welcome to do, but see, we have time, and next month, we'll put, put it back on the agenda, if that's okay. And by that time, we'll have the, we'll have the, and plus, we're letting the public know, because we don't like to spring things on the public that we hadn't announced, especially contract extensions and things like that. We love your company. I do. Love midlife, and I think you do a tremendous service for the community. So, we wanted the public to at least be aware, you know, for, you know, sort of like give notice that we want to do this, and I apologize, but I've been ripping and running, had a new grandbaby last week.
Y'all came back two or three times.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. But, and I apologize for, for the, you know, not knowing this. Yes, sir. Bring to Mr. Pierre. Mr. Pierre will review all of this. Yeah, this is- Yeah, but I'm worried about those, you know, those extensions. If they were addendums to the original, if every one of them was an extension of the original, then the original only called for, if you guys can look at page two. If y'all can look at page two, right there where it says "Contract stipulations," it talks about this original one being from June 29, 2000 to June 28, 2004, unless extended as provided herein, and the provision for extension is the contract may be extended by mutual consent of the parties for two extension periods, two years each. So, I want to do it right, Mr. Parker, that's all.
Can I go to my car?
But, but I tell you what, if you will accept that we can do it next month, and you and Mr. Pierre can get together, you can show him what you have, Ms. Goldman can pull what she has, and maybe there was a new contract, but see-
It was not a new contract. It was all-
Just extensions. Yes, sir. So, the original only called for, on the face of the document, only called for two extensions, two years each, which is a max of four years. And, and I'm just afraid that we'll give you something that's not worth anything, and I want to give you something that's good and that's legal, because we're not worried about any past, because I think the action of the parties will take care of whether or not you do have a contract. You do, in my opinion, but I'm not a lawyer. That's why we have that gentleman, Mr. Pierre, who is out of the room right now. So, if you will, I'm going to ask the council, what's your desire, council?
I make a motion that we revisit-
Okay.
Come back next meeting, and hopefully, we'll have all the legal-
Yes.
We'll have a contract.
So, it's been moved by Councilman Shaw. Seconded by Councilman Derry Green, that we, that we investigate table and, and make sure that we are meeting dotting the i's and crossing the t's and give you a good, good contract. And we do want public comment, if public want to comment, they'll give us time for the public to comment, and if they want a copy of the contract and see what the stipulations are. But we are glad that you're here. I am, and I think you've saved a lot of lives, and, and we enjoy working with you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And I, I know you, please don't be disappointed. We just want to be careful. If I were in your shoes, I'd be a little disappointed, okay? So, so please don't be disappointed. We're just trying to do the due diligence, okay? And, and let us know when you'll be available, and Mr. Pierre can meet with you, or anyone you want him to meet with, and we'll just wait on our councils, you know, okay?
I'll get it out there. Thank you.
We'll get you done. Thank you, sir. Okay, next.
Mayor, you need to come for the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Goldman. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? The item is table with the stipulation that we're going to do the due diligence to make sure that we have a, a valid contract, and the public can comment in this 30, 30 or so day period. Item 12, resolution 18-1772, a resolution authorizing city of Bastrop through its mayor to make application to the Delta Regional Authority for $110,000 to purchase training structure for the Bastrop Fire Training Ground. Mr. Timothy Williams. Hello there, sir. Can you state your name and what your official capacity is with the city of Bastrop? Timothy Williams, Fire Prevention Officer. Tell, tell us a little bit about this structure now. We dedicated two acres in the industrial park, right?
Yes, it's a, it's a, the PIA will require a minimum of three quarters. They've got at least two acres. Y'all donated two and a half. And then a burn, a burn room or a burn building, and then a training tower, which has got to be 35 foot tall. That's what we're putting in, wanting to put in for the grant for.
How much progress have we made on that so far? And tell us the purpose of this. What does it do for our fire rating, in your opinion, sir?
We're only allowed, training is worth nine points, but we can only get a maximum of about six without a training facility.
So, a third of the points would be left on the table because we don't have a training facility. Now, we had a small training facility on Kamel Street by H.B. Adams at one time. That's been inactive for years. Is that correct? Doesn't meet the requirements. Okay. And this, in your opinion, your professional opinion, would help us with our actual training, where our firemen are actually better? And this thing is structured several stories high?
Thirty-five foot tall.
Thirty-five foot tall, which is more than three stories, right? And, and aside from getting the points, we'd have better trained firefighters, correct?
Correct.
Can you tell us a little bit about the progress that's been made out there? You know, we talked about two and a half acres. What has been done so far? What has been done so far out there since we dedicated that?
We started at ground zero, we had to put in a core, start smoothing out the land. We just finished up, we had to have, we utilized the dirt that was out there, that's dug out in the ditches.
Okay.
And now we got a forty-by-forty slab put out there.
Okay.
And that is for us to utilize LSU annually to come in. They have props of a three-story tower.
Yeah. So that slab will allow them to come in?
Yes, to be stable. But all we can do is ask them to come, we can, you know, require them to come.
Right.
So you may get them one year, you may not.
And this structure, if we do this structure, we'll have our own.
Absolutely.
Okay. Now, tell me this, so is it muddy out there now? Just, just, you said we dug up dirt and we just, is there mud or is there some asphalt out there?
Yeah, there's plenty of asphalt.
Yeah, there's plenty of asphalt that came from our rat pile, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. There were questions about, was, that's missing asphalt, yeah. It's at the fire tower. Yeah, you were first in line, and there are tons of asphalt out there. Yes. That's, yes, sir, that's missing asphalt. So, and we were very liberal with that asphalt, is that correct? Yes. So what's your recommendation? Do you want to say anything else to this council about this? Now, we're, this is to give us the authority to apply for a grant through the Delta Regional Authority, correct?
Correct.
And then Ms. Doris Carter, they're working on this.
Yes. Yes. You and Ms. Doris Carter, our information technologists and whatever, has been working on this grant, and you guys feel pretty good about it, right? And you've gotten a, a sort of a cost estimate and all of that, correct? And all you're asking, what's this city's exposure, what amount of money would we be required to put in?
It's ten percent.
Ten percent.
But, as you know, we're in partnership with District Two, so they're at least forty percent.
Okay.
It's kind of been a little more lenient than that lately.
Yes. And, and I do appreciate the, I mentioned this to, to, to Mr. Boyd yesterday, Bubba Boyd, how much we appreciate it working with Fire District Number Two and how well this partnership is. So you're recommending this? It'll help us with fire training, also help us with points toward going from a four, our goal is to get to a one, but we're trying to go through a, pie past three and go straight to two at least, correct? And let me commend you and the Fire Department for your hard work for this effort. You know, when we came here, we said, that's priority one, is to get back to a two. I'd ask a, Mr. Brady, you have something to say? We had, I'd ask a, an insurance company, an agency, to, to run the data and find out what the citizens of Bastrop are paying now as for, on average, for businesses and properties, and if we were two, what would those premiums be? And it was a twenty percent difference. So if we can save all of the business and all the residents that's in Fire District Number Two and, and our Bastrop Fire Department, twenty percent on their insurance paper, that's in the, that's in the millions of dollars in aggregate. So, Councilman, I will not prolong the time. I will not prolong the time. What is your pleasure?
Mayor, I'm going to make a, um, recommendation, a motion.
Okay.
That we accept Resolution eighteen seventeen seventy-two.
I second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Locke and seconded by Councilman Derry Green that we adopt the resolution that's in discussion. Any discussion or any questions?
You did a good job explaining.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted, we hope to, to get you. You know, I visited the Mendon one, the Mendon Tower, Webster Tower for Fire District Four, no, Seven. It's right off the interstate going into Shreveport, you take that Goodwill exit or so, and I sent the chief, and I didn't have your cell number. I'm going to forward those pictures to you, and I had them for, for a presentation tonight. If everyone want to see it, it takes about twenty minutes of what this looks like. But no one wants to see it, so we're going to go.
Thank you, man.
Thanks, thank you, sir. We appreciate your service, sir. Okay. Item number thirteen, Resolution eighteen, oh, I'm sorry, the resolution is adopted, correct, Ms. Goldman?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Now, one, let me, let me ask, and I know that I should have asked it before.
Yes, sir.
But how will this show up in the new budget? As a disaligned item for, for the grant?
It will be a line item. I didn't put it in there yet because we're just doing an application. Whenever we get word, official letter granting us, telling us how much we're going to get and how much our match is, then we'll amend our budget to reflect any kind of grants that we have between now and June 30th next year.
And you got the, we got the, which one, it's District Number Two, was it, that going to be funding part of this?
Yes, sir. The District Number Two goes in with us generally to the tune of around forty percent of, of what we do. And they've been very good about that. It's a, it's a true partnership between the City of Bastrop Fire Department and Fire District Number Two. We're glad to save, you know, I remember I worked with Mr. Virgil Vets on the creation of Fire District Number Two and promoting that. I remember we charged forty dollars a trailer and like fifty bucks a home or something, seventy-five bucks a home, and the voters voted that. So then that expanded the range of the Bastrop Fire Department and new, new fire stations. And it's just good for people. I wish we could do something for more people in Morehouse Parish who's got a fire rating over ten. And, you know, so that's for the future, for future discussion. We, we hope that those kind of discussions will take place so we can give better fire service to, to more of the parish, hopefully. Number thirteen, Resolution eighteen dash seventeen seventy-three, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Vantage Health Plan Incorporated for providing health insurance to all city employees and retirees for fiscal year 2018-19. Ms. Goldman, can you help us with that, please?
Yes, sir. We had got prices and Vantage, this is the first year we've not had no increase in our...
Can you say that again?
No increase. I think they started out with two percent.
No, I think they started out with six. And then we took it, negotiated it to two, and then our great representative helped us get it down. Because we had some competitive bids that were real competitive, that we went out in the marketplace, and we were able to get some real competitive bids, and Vantage worked with us and came back with a zero. And I think that's, that's the first, isn't it?
Very first. We've been there since 2007.
Yeah.
Anyway, it's helping us with our budget.
I make a motion that we accept this.
Okay.
Sound like it's a good thing.
Yes, sir.
I second that motion.
Yes, sir. So it's been moved by Councilman Shaw, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Councilman Moore, that we accept the, the, the resolution, that we adopt the resolution. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? All opposed? The resolution is adopted. Fourteen, a Resolution eighteen seventeen seventy-four, a resolution to authorize the mayor on behalf of the City of Bastrop to enter into a contract with Lewis and Ellis to provide actuarial services for G A S B dash, or seventy-five compliance. Ms. Goldman, can you elaborate on that?
Yes, sir, Mayor, this is something the legislative auditor has us to do every year, and it's actually an actuary. This one here is new, we usually have new things come up. This here deals with an audit issue considering our four pensions. Somebody independent has to look at our records and make this injury, so that way when Cindy Haynes does our audit, then she can put those numbers in our audit. And it's prorated if the city was to happen to go for having bids bankrupt or whatever, it gives a projection over a period of years of how we would fund that and all that. So this is just a number, but she's done a real good job, and she's very reasonable. The good thing is she already has most of our information, so all we got to do is give her our wages and the rest of it, she's already got. So that saves us money, too.
Yes. With all plans, actuarial studies or reports, taking into consideration ages and life expectancies and all of this, and does all kind of elaborate projections as to viability of, of plans. What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I make the motion, Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman Moore has made the motion, Council, Councilman Robert Shaw has seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? The motion, the resolution is adopted. Item fifteen, recess to enter into executive session regarding Lawrence Roth et al., case number seventeen dash thirty-five, fifty, uh, three-five-five-one-zero, and KMR Holdings LLC, case number eighteen dash three-zero-two-four-one, Depp Torres in the United States District Court for the Southern District of Texas, Houston, Texas. I need a, a...
I make the motion, Mayor.
Okay. It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Councilman Moore, seconded by Councilman Howard Locke, that we, that we go into, enter into executive session, and we will, so that motion is to recess. And any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? And this should be a very short recess. Very short. So we'd like for our audience, our participants in this meeting to, to remain, if possible, just going to step in that room, and we'll be out in, in almost no time. So this meeting is in recess. Oh, did we, did we vote?
No. Yeah, we voted, but we hadn't got a form, we had to go through and get a check for form or do.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks.
So we all vote?
We have to take fourteen with you.
You have a fourteen?
You sure?
A fourteen?
Okay. Because I have a fourteen right there.
So seventeen.
Okay.
This is... Man, okay, this is...
Okay, okay.
Seventeen, seventeen.
I've seen them. What if I land?
I'm looking at the other one.
I don't know. I'm giving it back. I'm having these. Why?
I don't want to get upset, you know? I'm gonna be bad.
I'm not.
Yes, okay. Good to see you. How can you go on? Every time.
You sure?
I got grandchildren home. I gotta go play with them before they leave.
Oh, okay. I got kids at home.
Yeah. You stuck with them. I ain't stuck with them.
See?
Yeah, I saw. You were right.
Yeah. I'm an act. So when I do...
No, no, no.
I'm an act. What's up?
That's the best thing you can do.
Yeah.
No, I'm trying to do.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's, that's right there. That's giving him my opportunity to...
No, well, this is... Maybe they don't say anything.
They can't.
Maybe they do. But y'all guys, y'all been here doing this longer than I am. That just concerns me.
I'd lay, I'd lay that, we can jump at six. Put it at the end.
Ms. Goldman, can you give us a roll call to determine a quorum?
Yes, sir. Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Prater. Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Green.
Present.
Mr. Locke.
Here.
Our present mayor.
The, we have a quorum. The meeting, the recess is over and we are officially in the meeting of Thursday, June fourteenth, twenty eighteen.
Mayor, let's hold the civic source to the end.
Yes, sir. You want to go on with everything?
Yeah, because we need to do some couple of things together.
So we have resolution seventeen dash seventeen seventy-five, a resolution authorizing Henry Cotton, Mayor, to employ the services of Murray and Murray LLC for legal services relating to the bankruptcy litigation and further providing with respect thereto. Mr. Pierre, can you speak to this, please?
Yes. I apologize for my jacket. With respect to item number seventeen on the agenda.
Yeah.
Of course, this, the bulk of this administration being here, City of Bastrop engaged into a cooperative endeavor agreement with Flying Tigers, City of Bastrop in Louisiana Economic Development whereby financial obligations were created between Flying Tigers and the City of Bastrop. Notwithstanding that obligation to do so, those parties, City of Bastrop as well as Flying Tigers are listed in that contractual or corporate debt agreement as solidarity obligals, which means that City of Bastrop as well as Flying Tigers, you know, one unpaid the other one is obligated for the entirety of their indebtedness. That being done, that being said, notwithstanding their obligation under agreement, Flying Tigers did not meet their portion of the obligation and more recently filed for bankruptcy in the state of Texas. There are two bankruptcy filings with the individuals as well as the business. Those have been joined together under one filing in the state of Texas. There have been actions that have been taken throughout the last couple of years with respect to that. The City of Bastrop is a creditor. We are, Flying Tigers is indebted to us under that solidarity obligation as well as they're indebted to us in additional two hundred thousand dollars, a little north of two hundred thousand dollars for fuel expenses that they owe us for. Our interest is not being protected. The mayor did request that I look into someone to be able to protect our interest. I vetted out firms and I'm recommending Murray and Murray out of Baton Rouge, Louisiana, Dwayne Murray and Lisa Murray are the partners in that firm, Dwayne Murray being the senior partner. Mr. Dwayne Murray is currently, he has a debt of practice for the last twenty-five or thirty years, as well as he's the trustee, he's been the trustee for that district in South Louisiana, I want to say better part of twenty years. He is very experienced in handling multi-million dollar companies and reorganizing those companies. He knows how to protect the interests of those debtors on his debtor side of the practice. I strongly urge that we contract, we allow the mayor under resolution seventeen to contract with Murray and Murray and come to terms with their rate and so that we can have our interest protected in the state of Texas.
Oh, I want you to make that clear that this bankruptcy was filed in the state of Texas.
Filed in the state of Texas.
So we have to have counsel that can represent us in the state of Texas.
Correct, correct. Now, more recently, I think you all can recall, maybe it may have been in the April meeting, there were some discussions about this whereby we were notified by the bankruptcy court in the western district in Texas to get on this creditors committee. You know, the most, the group of larger creditors, which we are one of them, you know, that Flying Tiger left holding the bag, having an obligation to, we're on that, we're, we submitted to be placed upon that committee of creditors. However, there's nobody there to protect our interest.
And that's what they're gonna do.
Everybody else has legal counsel and we're sitting over there, you know, like we're not there really. So we're asking that the firm of Murray and Murray represent our interest and try to recruit some of those monies from Flying Tigers. When they start disseminating assets or paying monies out, you know, we need to make certain that we get some of those monies.
May I make a recommendation that we approve resolution seventeen seventeen seventy-five?
It's been moved by Councilman Locke, seconded by Councilman Shaw, that we adopt this resolution. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The eyes have it, the resolution seventeen dash seventeen seventy-five is adopted. Thank you, gentlemen. Item eighteen, resolution eighteen dash seventeen seventy-six, a resolution authorizing Henry Cotton, Mayor, to enter into a lease agreement with Vector Disease Control International relating to the leasing of the aircraft hangar and related grounds and further providing with respect thereto. When, when I realized that the City of Bastrop was faced with a breach of the agreement with the Louisiana Economic Development, we were exposed to, the total, I believe, of the grant was over five hundred thousand dollars, Ms. Goldman. Was it five seventy-five or something like that?
Five fifty.
Yeah, five. And, but Flying Tiger, I think, had only drawn down about four hundred, a little over four hundred thousand dollars. So according to the agreement, as Mr. Pierre has stated, we were sponsors and we were liable for if they defaulted. And there was a default. And there are stipulations in the, in the agreement that the, that the grant, because performance, job performance numbers were in there. You produce so many jobs a year and you get a grant. But if you don't meet those performance indicators, which they didn't, when you go out of business, you don't have any employees. And economic development is tied to, the amount of grants is tied to how many jobs you're going to create and what the values of those jobs are. So the, the grant turned into a loan at, I believe, twelve percent is something I read in the contract. And we would be, we were going to be charged forty-five thousand, forty-five cents a day in interest alone. And we're going to have to pay about five hundred thousand dollars out of the general fund for this. But with a new, my, my goal was to renegotiate with, with LED. And we have a tentative agreement that we need to firm up that would make all of this go away. We'd have new performance numbers and the proceeds from the hangar rent, lease from, to Vector would cover our obligations with the jobs that we're going to bring here, the few jobs that we're going to bring here. It's not going to be a lot, but we want this situation to go away and not take a half million dollars out of our, out of our, out of our general fund. So that's the goal of all of this, is to, is to save the citizens of Bastrop money to bring an operating company here that's got a lot of landings and takeoffs. Flying Tiger was good for Bastrop Airport because the more landings and takeoffs you have, the higher your scores are with the FAA and your funding, your fund is tied to landings and takeoffs. And Vector will fill a gap because we don't have near as many right now. And we are seeking a funding, I talked with Congressman Abraham's office two weeks ago about runway extension of fourteen hundred and ninety-eight feet, which would give us five thousand five hundred feet, which means we could have business jets coming here and business class airplanes to make our airport really a, a more viable, economically viable airport to attract businesses. Because if someone has a citation jet and they want to operate at Bastrop, they can't take off with a full load on a four thousand foot strip. So there's a lot tied to this other than mitigating the horrible situation that we find ourselves in with reference to liability. So this resolution with, with Vector Disease Control, they do mosquito spray. And we're also having the benefit of having someone here... they do mosquito spray. And we're also having the benefit of having someone here to help us with our mosquito problem. Uh, we've been able to get a lot of information from Vector on how to bait traps and do a more, more comprehensive and scientific, uh, uh, disease prevention, um, uh, situation where we don't just go down the road with the truck and, and, you know, going, you know, how the mosquito truck goes through neighborhoods. Everybody feels good about it, but you might not have the right species of this, of mosquitoes. There's only five or seven that can transmit the Zika virus or some of these West Nile and all of this. So we want a comprehensive plan to do baiting and see what, what, what species of mosquitoes or in what parts of towns and effectively, uh, put the spray out. So this gives us a lot more than just helping us mitigate the, uh, the Flying Tiger situation and, and get rid of that liability. We, so that's what I'm asking the council to authorize me to, uh, to firm an agreement with, um, with Vector. It's a five-year agreement initially and, and I will provide all the council members and the general public with a copy of, of that agreement. Uh, gentlemen, what is your pleasure?
So they gonna do our spraying also?
No, no, I see it, we've been able to pick their brain on some, now, they will spray.
How long is the agreement for, Mr. Guy?
It's a five-year lease. With an option to extend.
An option to extend.
Okay. And our, our, um, well, the, the next is nineteen, it talks about the LED part, the Louisiana Economic Development part of this same, because they're tied together. We need Vector to do the LED, uh, the LED, uh, negotiation. Uh, we talk with LED, we've had many, many meetings with them, uh, both here and in Baton Rouge to...
Do we need them together, Ms. Goldman, or separate?
Separate.
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 Thank you.
Mr. Cotton, will we be able to go into other contracts? Is this gonna be the only company that we're gonna go into a contract with?
For that hangar.
For that, for that particular?
Yes, sir, that hangar. It's only large enough. In fact, they, they operate in Greenville, Mississippi now. They have several planes and they're gonna use this as a repair facility. We'll have mechanics here. We'll have an opportunity maybe to have some apprenticeship, some young people, men and women who might wanna learn how to work on airplanes. We want, you know, when you have a, a shop on your field, we have one shop that's operated by two great young men, uh, and planes come in from all over to get engines and annuals and annual inspections and all of that already. This will just heighten what we do at our airport and it'll put us in another...
So, w- we come into agreements that them come in and out the hangar?
Oh, yeah, we can't, they don't have helicopters. They can't, they can't just come down. They gotta taxi and stuff. So they'll have access to the related area and that's, that's what the contract states. We can't just, we can't just, uh, you know, uh, limit them to their hangar. You know, they got access to the apron and park planes out just like anyone, any other pilot or any other person that would come in and do, do things. Uh, what is your pleasure? Do we have a motion?
I'm making a motion.
Councilman Shaw has made the motion.
Second.
Second by Councilman Lot that we adopt this resolution. Are there, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution, what's that, eighteen dash seventeen seventy-six?
Correct.
Is adopted. Item nineteen, Resolution eighteen dash seventeen seventy-seven, a resolution authorizing Henry Cotton Mayor to enter into negotiation with Louisiana Economic Development relative to obligations set forth in the corporate endeavor agreement between LED Louisiana Economic Development, the City of Bastrop and Flying Tiger, and further providing with respect thereto. Uh, this is related to, uh, the deal, the agreement with Vector and we are using, I'm using the Vector agreement as a basis to negotiate with, with LED. And I expect that, that the proceeds that we get from the Vector, Vector, uh, lease, the monthly lease amount should cover all of our expenses related to the hangar and, uh, and pay the note. So we're kinda like breaking even on the hangar, but we're getting rid of a half million dollar obligation using the resources that we've obtained from, from this, uh, this deal, the Flying Tiger deal. So this helps us salvage, um, the deal and actually, uh, take the lemon and make a little lemonade. Uh, what is your pleasure?
I'm making the motion, Mayor.
Uh, the motion's made by Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilman Marvin Moore.
Second.
Second by Councilman Shaw, Robert Shaw, that we adopt this resolution. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The resolution is adopted. Resolution eighteen dash seventeen seventy-seven. Thank you, gentlemen, for your, for your help and your guidance. Um, yes, sir. Okay, we're gonna go back to, which one is that, Robert?
Four. Nine.
Nine, nine. Mr. Bo Byers. Mr. Byers, are you guys, are you gentlemen ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, Mr. Pierre, uh, and Mr. Byers. Mr. Byers, when we ask you to, um, review the contract with our council, Mr. Pierre, uh, what were you gentlemen able to determine?
What we determined is that, uh...
Let me start.
Yes.
Okay.
No, I said, let me drive that train, let me drive this train.
Okay. Can you speak into your microphone, counsel?
Uh, and it was off, I apologize.
Okay.
Mayor and councilman, uh, in, in reviewing the Resolution thirteen fifteen twenty-nine, uh, which is the resolution that was adopted, uh, by the council in two thousand and thirteen, whereby this body, uh, agreed to contract with services with Akron and Civic Source is a, I'm assuming Akron's your parent company?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Oh, oh, in the, in the resolution, and, and I'll read it and I'll explain what I mean, show you my, my, I guess, my concerns. The resolution, uh, uh, states as follows, whereas the City of Bastrop in an effort to increase its ability and efficiency in tracking taxes that are owed and in collecting delinquent taxes that are owed and due would benefit from engaging Akron Information Systems LLC, a willing and able provider of services designed to accurately track the status of taxes owed to the city and facilitate the collection of those taxes. And whereas the city, and whereas the city has identified Akron Information System LLC as a willing and able provider such services and find that engaging Akron under the terms of the contract furnished review and appearing under separate cover would benefit, uh, to the city and its citizens. That was the scope of the resolution. The resolution, uh, uh, references the agreement. The agreement is attached to the resolution. In the agreement, Akron's scope of services, uh, is identified under the section that says agreement, Article One, scope of services, and it references Schedule One. It says as follows, contractor shall perform each of the services as set forth in Schedule One of this agreement, which Schedule One is attached here to and incorporated by reference, herein by reference in its entirety, quote unquote, services. Contractor shall cooperate with the government authority, governing authority and any other contractors providing services to the governing authority as needed in the performance of such services. Fast forwarding over to Schedule One, Schedule One, scope of services says specifically this. Uh, contractor shall use, well, I'm sorry, uh, the services overview. Contractor shall perform, administer and otherwise execute on behalf of the governing authority all collection and sales related to, uh, activities relative to recapturing delinquent tax revenues associated with real property as described in revised statute forty-seven twenty-one fifty-one, et cetera. Here's my concern. In looking at the resolution that was adopted by this body in two thousand and thirteen, my reading of it on first blush seems to, uh, suggest that this body authorized Akron to collect taxes. Somewhere in, somewhere in the midst of the collection of taxes, uh, was an effort made to sell adjudicated properties. Well, there's nowhere in this contract and there's nowhere in the resolution that authorized Akron to sell adjudicated properties. Not from my reading and I, I, I pointed out to counsel a moment ago. I'm not certain whether or not there was some subsequent counsel action authorizing Akron, uh...
In the form of resolution.
In the form of resolution and our Civic Source to perform those services on behalf of the City of Bastrop, but it's not governed in this contract. But when, uh, we governing body decided to con, to cancel or to terminate the services of Akron, the only thing that we had to go on was the termination portion of the contract that is set forth in this agreement.
You mean the...
That's the contract that was signed, oh, oh, by the then mayor in this case, and I'll look at the, uh, to be specific on it.
Officer Jones.
Get you a date.
Twenty thirteen?
Twenty thirteen.
Okay, that's Mayor Jones.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Uh, the contract that was signed, uh, uh, authorizing the services of Akron...
It would depend on the date in twenty thirteen.
The date that the contract, the, uh, the, uh, well, the minutes, uh, from the LLC authorizing Akron to act is dated September the sixteenth of two thousand and thirteen.
That's under Mayor Jones' term.
The resolution, am I missing a portion? The resolution was signed on September the twelfth, two thousand and thirteen. So September the twelfth, two thousand and thirteen, this, uh, uh, body, uh, signed this document, Officer Jones and, uh, uh, the, the councilman, alderman, who are, who were currently sitting at that time, authorized Akron to go out and perform services under this contract. But there's no way in here where I see anything about the sale of adjudicated property. But as I said before, uh, when, uh, according to this agreement, if you're gonna terminate either for cause of, for convenience, it's a certain protocol that's in place. Uh, uh, we followed that protocol by the letter dated, I think, May tenth of two thousand and eighteen, when the mayor sent the letter out and the persons who were obligated to send it out to was Brian Barrios, the CEO of Akron Information Services out of New Orleans, and to Ryan Adams, uh, uh, Esquire, uh, with Sheer Garner, Kay Hill, Richter, Klein and Abel Hilbert LLC out of New Orleans. So those, that letter terminating the services was sent out in accordance to, only thing we had to deal with, with Akron here. Now, last, uh, council meeting, the representative, uh, came in on behalf of Akron and say, you know, you know, give me an opportunity to come back 'cause we would still wanna do business with you. Uh, and of course, counsel is here today. Uh, it is my thought and recommendation, unless, unless you all can tell me that there's another document, another resolution.
It is, yes. It's another resolution we did just before this council come in to sell adjudicated property.
Okay.
There is a resolution.
Well, here's, here's...
Right before...
Here's the solution. That's a resolution or is there, is there another contract?
The contract, well, there is a different contract.
Different contract. Well, here's, here's, here's my thought. This contract deals with the, uh, uh, the property taxes.
Property.
We need to rescind the, uh, the decision made on May the tenth of two thousand and eighteen with relative to allowing them to do their, perform their services under, uh, the property taxes.
Yes, collection and...
Correct, collection of property taxes. I think they stand on notice with the letter that, uh, the, uh, uh, the action taken by this body was that they would not do anything else with adjudicated properties.
Absolutely.
If you will provide me with a copy of that resolution and that new contract, we'll make certain that, you know, we'll get in compliance with that. But I think they're on notice not to do anything else, even though right after May tenth, signs start coming up and I think we, I sent an email out to council, say cease and desist, we're gonna pull them up because our actions, you know, uh, dictated that we were not going forward with your services with respect to adjudicated properties. So, the long and short of it, with respect to what's on the agenda today, I think he's asking that we rescind the action, which I don't think we need to sign another contract. Uh, if you rescind the action, uh, and thereby, there, we'll be have authority to act on the, on behalf of this contract and then we can go back and deal with that adjudicated property.
And, and the question that we had was, was there one contract, one resolution, one contract that governed both, which is what you understood? Is that correct, Mr. Byers?
Correct, but it sounds like, once I saw that one, that is a contract I haven't seen.
Okay, yes.
Which is our tax, which sounds like sort of twenty-one fifty-one forward, which would be tax sale.
Yeah, absolutely.
We, I've seen the adjudicated contract.
Okay.
In an email, but it's not this one. So, I am completely one hundred percent in step with Mr. Pierre as far as how we...
Okay, okay. Now, so...
The question, Mayor, is do we need to take any action tonight? Or do we need to, are you gonna have everything you need to...
But thinking they put out, do notice already, right?
They're on notice with respect to adjudicated property. And I'm gonna assume that it's the same protocol that is set forth in this contract, notify these, these are the, these are the parties.
And let's make, let's make clear, is this, is this body's, uh, is this body's desire for sure to, for, for Civic Source to continue with our tax sales and our, is that correct, Ms. Goldman? Is that a vital service, Ms. Goldman?
Yes, sir, it's very helpful.
And, absolutely.
Yes.
But not just adjudicated property.
Yes.
Not the adjudicated property.
Yeah, not the ju, now, with respect to adjudicated properties, so have we separated them in, in everyone's mind now?
Well, we gotta, we gotta do that on the contract? Do we gotta separate them on the contract?
Well, well, in the notice of termination that, uh, went out on May the tenth of two thousand and eighteen from the, with the mayor's signature to the firm in New Orleans as well as to the CEO, they now on notice that, that we're not contracting with them for adjudicated property.
Okay.
I think we're all clear. That, nothing needs to be done with respect...
To adjudicated property.
To adjudicated property. The letter just rescinded, in his mind, this contract.
Yes. And that was the question tonight because we didn't want to, uh, halt the tax sale for next week.
Right.
And their services...
She's, she's gonna go get that May tenth letter and I thought that we were very specific.
Yes.
Reading that letter. You have it. Bang, bang.
And while, and let, let's state for the record, the problem that we had with the adjudicated property is that there were so many properties, uh, that Civic Source had and it prevented because when Civic Source, uh, does what they do with a property, they go through a list of services that they perform like title insurance, um, all types of, you know, uh, abstract, whatever you guys do legally. It's four, five, or six, or seven different services that you provide. And you bill for each one of those on, let's take a little bitty lot on Guy Street and a, a, a property on, uh, Apollo Drive, if the city owns. Then your fees would be basically the same for both of those, correct? And one property might be worth three hundred dollars to a neighbor that might pay three, five hundred, or seven hundred dollars. The other property might be worth thirty thousand dollars. And Civic Source would charge the same thing for fees because it's the same legal work. Whereas we know that once you get your five thousand two hundred dollars for the one on Guy Street or Robert Street, I'm not trying to degrade any streets, but there are a lot of properties on these streets and everyone can see that they're grown up with a burned down house in the middle of them and we need to take them down. Uh, but no one in their right mind would go there and pay fifty-two hundred dollars for them. But yet, they were all listed and the city's hands was tied in that we couldn't take our, uh, skids there and there and charge and add a hundred and fifty dollars per hour, which is what we charge for bringing that mulcher in there and cleaning that lot up in about an hour. And we wanna attach that and then when you sell it for fifty-two hundred, we get zero, except we spend city money, we use city equipment, we use city personnel, and we're out of, you know, a hundred and fifty dollars, uh, per lot at a minimum and we never will recoup our money. And we gotta pay for our skid, skids there and our, our Kubota. And it was a bad, it was bad for us. So we were looking for a way to be able to clean those properties up because the first two or three we cleaned up, the first one we cleaned up, it sold that next day. The people came in and paid their taxes because they hadn't seen their, their, uh, their grandparents' house since the grandparent died because it was a jungle. So, we were trying to, to, now, there is a purpose for some of our properties Civic Source would be grateful.
Right.
But not all. So...
Still the same procedure.
So, I would, I would recommend to this council that we rescind the, it's my personal preference, that we rescind the action and based on stipulation that we withdraw all properties and give you a new list.
To be clear with what that would do is when we don't have any properties, the contract with no properties is basically, it's just sitting there active with no actual activity because we can't sell any properties if we don't have it.
Yes, but, but it would give the city the option to give you the ones that were... Yes, but, but it would give the city the option to give you the ones that were good for you, good for the client, because we might have a property on Guy Street, let's say, that someone says, hey, I want to build a house here, and I'm going to go to the bank, and if I buy it from the city, just as adjudicated property, we're going to give them a certificate. But then when they go to the bank, the bank's going to say, where's your title insurance? Where's this, where's that? Now, if they want to barbecue on that lot and park a truck and build a shed to park it, just an extension of their property, that's, that's one thing.
They won't get a title for that, if they going to barbecue?
Well, some people don't care about that.
But what about the people that do care about it?
The people that do care, they can come to us and say, hey, I want a title, I want the full skinny. Then we can say, hey, Civic Source, we need you to handle this piece of property. That's my idea of how we should use your company, rather than blanket, just give you everything that's five years old.
And we can do that, and that's kind of my thought as well, is that if you'll want to clean up the, we have 75 properties that we can put up tomorrow.
So we just going to get them the property that people not willing to go get the title on?
That people want to get titles, they want a clean title.
But the ones that don't want title, we'll sell them.
No, we'll give them a title to say, saying, what is it, can you go to the bank with our title so that no one will come back, we'll be assured that no one will, Mr., no, Mr. Pierre, would you address that? I'm not a lawyer.
Okay, I promise I will, but let me fix this.
Go ahead.
Okay. The letter that was sent out on May 10th specifically referenced this resolution, this contract.
That, that resolution that you're looking at, which was the...
This letter dated May 10th, you know, specifically referenced the resolution with Civic Source for the collection of taxes.
Which was in error. We didn't, we never intended that.
Correct.
We never intended that.
Correct, absolutely.
Okay, okay.
So that's what got them, them up in arms and...
Oh, it would have us up in arm too if we were aware.
Right. So, so as I said before, I think the action that needs to be taken is that we can rescind the action that was taken to cancel Akron, i.e. Civic Source's contract as a whole, but we can hold steadfast to our letter with the spirit of it being that we no longer want them to handle adjudicated properties. I will secure the documentation from Ms. Goldman, and I will review that with respect to that contract and see if there's anything extra we need to do with them.
So you recommend tonight that we rescind that?
Have to rescind.
Because it's tied to that, correct?
Because it's tied to the taxes.
Okay, is everyone clear with that? That it's tied to, see, they sell, they got, they do two things. They collect our taxes for us. When you get those tax notices, they don't, we don't print them here at City Hall, they print those, and they send them to everyone, and they do all this research, they track down who are the heirs and who the, you know, who the 72 people who's down the line in this aired property. They do a lot of work. But in, in collecting taxes, sending out the tax notes at the end of the year, is that correct, Ms. Goldman?
The delinquents, yeah.
The delinquent taxes, they do that. Once, once the, once the, the date where taxes are due, once it's passed due, they get the list of everyone that paid their taxes, correct, Ms. Goldman?
That's right.
And then they take from that and extract who didn't pay, and they send all those people notices, the little note you get in the mail comes from them, and it doesn't work our staff. Ms. Goldman, what would that do to your office workload?
I would definitely have to hire another person.
At least one, at a minimum. Okay.
If she can hire somebody.
All right.
Hey, we can benefit from something, we can...
And we don't have the research for all that.
Yeah, we don't have the...
We don't, we don't have all that. They have everything.
Everything, yes.
And...
It's what they do.
Anybody calls and it's challenged, they can look it up and they can see every document that's attached to it, their signature, everything.
A ton of work.
Their software does everything.
Yes. So we definitely, and I talked with Ms. Goldman extensively about this service, about their collection efforts, Ms. Goldman, and you said the same thing to me earlier, that, that this service is vital. But since the letter is tied to the tax collection, we intend it for it to be tied to the adjudicated property.
So by rescinding it, do they give them permission to sell adjudicated property?
No.
No.
No. No, just to collect...
The letter, the letter references this contract, but the letter also says cease and cease all actions with respect to adjudicated properties.
Yes, all right.
And when I get the other, the new contract, I'll review it and I'll see if we should do anything extra, but I think they're on notice that they're to do nothing else with adjudicated property. As a matter of fact, that we told them to pull them signs up.
Right.
Hope we did. I expect we did.
Yeah.
Yes.
Y'all did it, y'all did it, yeah.
Yes.
So, Mr. Pierre, what do we need to do to move on?
Rescind.
Rescind the action from May of 2018, canceling their contract with respect to the collection of the taxes.
Okay.
That's all you need to do.
Can we get a motion to do that?
I'm making the motion, Mayor.
I second it.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Mayor Pro Tem Marvin Moore, second by Councilman Robert Shaw, that we rescind that action of the date that council indicated. And any discussion?
So once we rescind it, then we going to send notice, we going to have to do something else?
No, they have...
I don't think we have, Ms. Councilman Green, I don't think we have to do anything else, but I'm going to be cautiously optimistic until I look at the documentation, which is a new, a different contract for adjudicated property as well as a different resolution.
The reason I asked because Mr. Mayor Cotton said that he was going to give them a list of adjudicated property to sell, so do we have to have a contract for that?
Well, if, if, if this body wants to authorize the mayor to do something else, it's the same action that created, it's by resolution.
Okay, that's by resolution.
It's by resolution.
I was just making sure it's by resolution.
Yes. So it's been moved by Councilman Mayor Pro Tem Moore, second by Councilman Shaw, that we rescind the action so that we can proceed with tax sales and things like that, okay?
Okay, okay, I got you.
Is that clear?
It's clear.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The motion is rescinded, and...
One more thing, too.
Go ahead.
Going forward, like any, any items attached to the agenda that require a contract, can we have them in our agenda package before we get to the council?
If I have the contract, sometimes I don't have it.
Because it, because it's getting a contract the day of, it's not...
Sometimes the contract doesn't exist.
Right.
And any discussion that we have? I'm just saying some actions do not require a contract.
I know, I'm saying the ones that require a contract.
Okay. I believe that that's all of the business of this council for tonight. Are we missing anything? We've gone through all items?
May I move for adjournment?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Locke and second by Councilman Shaw that we adjourn. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
I'm working with the city in my room.
I was.
I'm working with the city in my room.
I just want to understand.
Well, we've gone through...